President.
Alderman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DiGioben Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomini.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nujame.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Prenaruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum that the next item of business is public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city clerk. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak, and there is a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 327 Bucks Hill Road, Vincent Scognamiglio. Hi, I'm Vincent Scognamiglio, 327 Bucks Hill Road. Came down to talk to you about a lot of it's the same stuff. The sidewalk on North Main Street by Kingdom Hall, it's collapsing. It's at the edge of the street now. I don't know when you're waiting to do something about it. Quads and the dirt bikes are getting worse in the neighborhood. The street basins, they're all sinking. There's problems with a lot of them, most of them in the neighborhood. Bucks Hill, actually Bucks Hill, Lincoln Dale, St. Michael's, all of it, Greystone. There's some problems with the speeders, problems with out-of-state plates at the high schools. I guess people working at the high school, North End Middle School, out-of-state plates in the parking lots complained about that last year, too. Nothing was done about it. Then everybody's parking in the fire lanes, no parking lanes, no standing zones on the grass, anywhere they want, everywhere they're not supposed to. Nothing's done about that. Bucks Hill School sidewalk where the crossing guard is, got a metal drain where the water goes into the street, but a metal lid for it sticks up four inches higher than the sidewalk. Good tripping hazard. Most of that sidewalk is a severe tripping hazard. So is the one on North Main Street. There's a lot of texting going on, people driving in the neighborhood. Still wondering when you're going to replace the 2.5 million you borrowed from the pension fund. The tripping and falling hazards on Bucks Hill Road and the health department, when they go in the stores like the Dollar Store on Chase Avenue and other stores, don't they grab the door handles and see how nasty they are? Can't you write up the stores for that? Because some of these door handles I won't even touch. I have to put a glove on. I don't know when you're going to start enforcing ordinances, but I hope you do it soon. Thank you.
Next speaker from 62 Avalon Circle, Richard Woods.
Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury. I wasn't sure whether or not I was going to speak tonight because before I came here, I got stopped by one of my clients who I tried to help, who was attacked for three hours over on the railroad tracks, and she was in tears for a couple of hours, and it sort of like set me off a little bit. And it's part of our life to worry about these things, especially amongst our women. We're more cautious than we used to be. But just so you know what's happening with the Human Rights Commission and the people working on it like me, first, you know, we're all volunteers. Two weeks ago, Sunday, I got a call from a woman who said she'd been robbed. She was in the American motel on South Main Street, and she wanted to know if she could get a ride to the police station to file a report. And I said, "Yeah, no problem. I'll be there in 10 minutes." I was sitting home and doing nothing. I'd already made the round of churches. So I brought her to the police department, and she was taken care of very well by Officer Bliss. And he, let me tell you, dealing with mentally ill people, this woman was released from psych ward in a hospital and sent to the American motel. But the thing is that the officer, contrary to what we read or see or hear, did a marvelous job of keeping this woman not just calm, but getting the correct information from her in a manner that did not make her feel less. And it's very, very important when you're dealing with people of this background, that they don't feel diminished in their association while you're trying to extract information from them in order to serve them. Couple of days later, I get a phone call from a couple with one child, 10 years old. They were also down there in the American motel. They wanted to ride up to town to find a place to live. Well, that didn't work out too well for them, and I found out a couple of days later, one of my CI's told me that there was a warrant out for their child because they, the mother was a heavy-duty heroin addict, and the DCF was well aware of the difficulty. But I told her, I said, "I'll go with you. The DCF will represent you. That's not a problem. I've done it 100 times, but just so you feel protected, so it shouldn't break down." It's one of the problems when people have some of these problems, and they may be very legitimate in their situation, they feel threatened by authority. For example, to bring anybody down to the police station that has been attacked, I have to have handcuffs myself to bring them down. They literally are scared of going into the police station. A lot of times, they have warrants out for loitering. They go down, they get arrested for loitering or for trespassing, and don't know anything about what they're doing. They don't have a lawyer, they can't afford a lawyer. They don't even have a telephone. And now to get them into the shelter, they have to call 211. Look, how do you call somebody if you don't have a phone? And you're homeless, you're sitting outside here on the steps. Because now I'm telling people, "If you have a problem, go over to the mayor's office. They've got lots of phones. They'll let you use the phone." I was over on Hillside last week, and a chap named Alfredo was sitting there, and he says, "Hey, Richard, I understand you help people." I said, "I try." I said, "You see that cat over there?" He says, "Yeah." I said, "That cat used to be skinny. Now look at it, it's fat." But the thing is, he was sent here by Detroit, Michigan, because he had family here. They're going to, they thought his family here would put him up. Well, it's not the case. I had to bring him down to the shelter, and the shelter's court said, "Well, you have to call 211." I said, "Well, here, use my phone," and we took care of it. In the meantime, I had to leave, so I took my phone back, and one of the staff there was nice enough to say, "Well, you know, come inside. You can use our phone, and we'll make sure you're treated properly."
One minute, Mr. Wood.
Chinkoya. The thing is that we are faced with these decisions about our homeless, and they are increasing in number. The thing is, we do have the money to add on to our facilities on South Main, on Benedict Street. We have the money. There's no question we have the money. I'm going to do a quick audit next week and find the money, and I'll come back and tell you where it is. And you can stack it up in silver dollars if you want, and we'll build that building for the people that we are supposed to be taking care of. Bear in mind, doing to others as you'd have others do unto you is a credo by which most of us were brought up. But we're not honoring that when you see homeless people by the dozens living in tents, living in cardboard boxes, and that's not right. And it's not honoring our presence on this earth as Americans, to have people not eating properly, have children not getting educated because their DCF has hold of them. And that's my story of the day. I hope I didn't bore you too much. But we have to take care of these problems, otherwise it's going to be shoved down our throat. The Supreme Court might be looking into the rights of the homeless. Dominique Pobiscum, peace be with you. Natamir, take it easy.
Next speaker from 44 Center Street, John Hembry.
Good evening, John Hembry, 44 Center Street. Let me know if this mic isn't very in good position. I came to speak about the noise problem in Waterbury, especially downtown Waterbury. Motorcycles, cars, even some mopeds and motor scooters, and people making excessive noise, especially at night. There are thousands of people that live, let's say, in a quarter mile from the Green in a circumference. Humans have a right to a quiet neighborhood. Like I said, I live a block from the Green. Everybody has a right to a quiet place to live. I have sensitivities with my seizure disorder, and one of them is noise. I also have hearing challenges, so I don't think the people in the suburbs realize how loud it can get. I can't prove this, but it appears that a lot of bikers and cars, especially at night, they're going to and from the bars, and they feel they can do anything with their bikes, rev them up when they come to stop signs, make a lot of noise. It's definitely over an acceptable limit. I don't know how you'd enforce that, but it's really very, very annoying. And I've lived downtown for nine years now, and every year, especially in the summertime, it gets worse. What they do is, a lot of the noise comes from West Main and East Main and around the Green. And they drive like they're on some sort of bike path. The noise also at some of the bars is excessive. What about the people, the elderly and the disabled, that spend much of their time either in their apartments or walking and sitting around the Green? When I take my walks, I go by the Green all the time. And again, I can't prove this, but the noise is so loud, it's just totally unacceptable. What about our kids downtown? I mean, it's very, it's proven that a noise above a certain level affects people's hearings. How are we affecting their hearing as well as their developing brains? I would be willing to work with people to bring down the noise level in Waterbury to a healthy level, if there are any acceptable suggestions. If you live in the suburbs, your levels aren't as bad, but they will get worse. The noise is only going to go from downtown areas out to the suburbs even more than it is now. I challenge anybody that lives in the suburbs to come downtown and live there for a few days, or spend the night downtown and see if you'd like to live down here with all the noise. I love Waterbury, but the noise is very unacceptable. Anyway, that's about all I had to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next speaker from 286 Fieldwood Road, Michael Servalino.
Michael Servalino, 286 Fieldwood Road, Waterbury, Connecticut. I don't speak too much when I come, but I'd like to come to your meetings, and I'm getting an education. Been coming here for the last three and a half years. You know, something happened the last couple of weeks. We had that sewer treatment plant, and it's been stinking like crazy in the south end. And I come up Route 8, and I smell it. And last week, we had the water treatment plant. You know, I got yellow water at my house. I got yellow water at the place I go. I own a business here in town. I wash people's hair. I have a beauty school. I may have to close tomorrow because I got yellow and brown water, okay? We got a problem in this city. It's not nicknamed "The Dirty Water" for nothing. We got a huge problem here. We can't drink the water. I can't open my business. I can't shower at home. And it's not just me. There's a lot of people out there. I know that we got a couple of firemen bailing out the one lake to the next one, paying them 24 hours a day, seven days a week pumping. But we got a 110-year-old valve that I know Mr. Larry DePillo has been talking about for the last couple of years since I've been here. This stuff is not being maintained. We got a huge issue in this city. And if you don't have yellow water or brown water now, you're gonna have it quickly. It's coming. All the storage tanks are now contaminated. Well, I don't want to say contaminated, but they have brown water in it because we pump it from the treatment plant up the hills to the big holding tanks, and the holding tanks make pressure and keep coming down. And it's the trickle-down effect. I'm on top of Bucks Hill. I got yellow water. I'm in the, oh, look at it rain outside now. We got beautiful water out there. We got the, I'm down on Thomason Avenue. We got it. I was just in the building over here at 77 Bank Street, just flushed the toilet. It is black. I cannot believe how black and brown that water is. Somebody's got to get to the bottom of this and find out why, and how long it's going to take to fix, because this is the beginning, guys. This is the beginning. You're going to see a lot of people upset when they can't get rid of it. Next up, to tack on to Vincent that was here, he lives on Bucks Hill Road. Just down the street from him is a wonderful little place. They tore down the wall. Vincent talked to you guys about it about a month ago. They took out all the rocks and stuff that was there. Now they put up this beautiful timber retaining wall, and the timber retaining wall is starting to fall. They actually put a support there with a rod coming up, a piece of rebarb in the sidewalk. Those kids walk up and down there in the morning to go to high school and to middle school. Somebody's going to have a problem. There's a liability on the city sidewalk with a piece of rebarb sticking out. It's on Bucks Hill Road. It's an issue. Somebody's got to look at the building structure, look at that wall, because that wall has only been up about three weeks, and it's already leaning into the sidewalk already on one side. It's an issue. I know Vincent brought it up a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know, some of the rocks and stuff got taken out of the road, thank you very much, but it's a bigger issue now with that rebarb sticking out. Also, the pavement seams. You know, pavement, I know it takes money to keep a city together and pave some roads. I understand that. Two years ago, Mr. Lopez, we did our favorite street, Boyd's Street. Thank you. Got it done. Last year, we got Lakewood Road done. Thank you. But what's coming up? It's October 1st. It's a new year. Where's the new pavement going? I haven't seen any out there. But where we did pave North Main Street a couple of years ago, and it was only three or four years ago, where the pavement meets, the two seams together are coming apart.
One minute, Mr. Servalino.
I ride a Harley. I have an expensive Harley. I have several of them. I don't ride them on North Main and Bucks Hill, because if I get in one of those seams, I'm going to go head over heels on that, because it's not just a pothole, it's the seams that are coming apart, and they're only a couple of years old. Just real quickly, the trash bins, I know it's been tabled for a while, but $250 is a little excessive. As a landlord, I cannot get my tenant to pay that, keep it tabled. And of course, the boat. That $250 a day on a boat parked, that's ridiculous. Boats are going in storage now for the winter, but thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo of 11 Steuben Street. A couple of items on your agenda. Item number four, Brass City Residences, Inc., Apartment A. Prior bill was over-forced. It's not a lot of money, $584, but I tried to look up the legal definition of over-forced. I've not found any legal definition of that. Can somebody please tell us what that refund was for, and what does a designation "prior bill was over-forced" mean? The other item agenda is number seven, and this is for the right-of-way services between the city of Waterbury and the state of Connecticut for the Waterbury-Nogatuck River Greenway, or thanks to F&amp;G, our new garbage way. The reason I bring this up is if you look at the second page from the state of Connecticut, it says, "Funding for the Right-of-Way Project is provided under the High-Priority Project Program with a cost-sharing of 80% federal money and 20% city of Waterbury municipality. The estimated cost for administering the Right-of-Way Project has increased from $166,000 to $585,000. The municipality will receive an invoice for the demand deposit from the DOT Revenue Accounting Office once the written acknowledgment of the PAL is received by the DOT." Now, I know we only have a 20% share here, but I think somebody's owed an explanation how something goes from $166,000 to $585,000 when there hasn't even been a shovel in the ground. Now, for the last six years, this mayor and his Democrat town chairman have kidnapped the Greenway Commission. There has been no progress on that commission, on that project whatsoever. I will remind you that Mrs. Niedemeyer donated Platt Park next to what was the old Howard Johnson, all of that property to the city of Waterbury for the purposes of putting a boat launch, a canoe launch, and a kayak launch in an open space park. All that money was there for that purpose. Then the next thing we know, oh, somebody found a couple of arrowheads. Well, Waterbury was never an Indian reservation. It was a hunting ground. And we don't know if those couple of arrowheads came from a hunter 100 and something years ago, or washed down during the 1955 flood from areas where the Indians did have encampments. But we heard all this garbage about how the project can't move forward, there's no accounting for the money, and Platt Park sits there with nothing being done. I'm not interested in the DOT and South Main Street. They haven't, never given an appropriate answer as to what's going on with the retaining wall that is failing on South Main Street. When this project is actually going to start, and Platt Park has no bearing on this whatsoever. Yet this administration and the DOT refuse to take the monies that was designated for Platt Park and do a thing. So we don't have a kayak launch. We don't have a canoe launch, nothing. And someday, along the mayor's garbage way, we're going to have a walkway along South Main Street. $166,000 to $580,000 something thousand. Somebody ought to tell the DOT they can go someplace, and it isn't to our Greenway.
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
As far as the water, the condition of the gates in our waterworks is despicable. I'll remind you that between 15 and 20 years ago, we went to turn the gates at Lakewood Road, which is the responsibility of the water department, and none of the gates worked. So we had to drain the entire reservoir, which we know is Lakewood, and we had to put all new gates in. Maybe somebody on his Board of Aldermen would like to get the maintenance records from the water department and find out when the last time those new gates were turned. Or are we going to have another problem that we're going to turn the gates and they don't work? An insult upon injury. Two years ago, we had to open the gate, and nobody bothered in the last two years to open the gate. People are getting paid weekly to flex these gates. And I've talked to the previous superintendent of water, and they admit they aren't being done, because the people responsible, responsibility for that, they're afraid. They're afraid to turn a gate, but they're not afraid to pick up a paycheck. Somebody needs to start asking these questions. And if you saw the picture in the paper, that's a disgrace that our equipment is in that kind of condition.
That's time, Mr. DePillo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, September 23, 2019. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Mr. President, motion approved the meeting of Monday, September 23, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. With that, they will recess into committees. Intergovernmental will go first, and then we'll do finance. Thank you.
I call the order two for the Intergovernmental Committee, Monday, October 7, 2019. Item number seven, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the project authorization letter number two for right-of-way services for the Waterbury-Nogatuck River Greenway, Phase One, with the state of Connecticut and authorizing the mayor to execute said PAL number two on behalf of the city as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, project manager, Bureau of Engineering, DPW. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to move the approval of item number seven as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number two, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve refunds for the following unused electrical permit, permit number PR 201-9000925, 74 Monroe Avenue, $67.50, Connecticut Electrical Services LLC, 178 Lucille Street, Extension, Suite One, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06708, as submitted by E. Gill, Grave Line Building Official, Department of Inspections.
This time, I would like to make a motion to approve item number two as read.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund for Brass City Residences Incorporated, 238 Walnut Street, Apartment A, in the amount of $583.93, as submitted by Michael J. Dalton, city clerk.
I would like to entertain the motion to approve item number four as read.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Alderman Sherman?
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the Bureau of Water and Water Pollution Control that can answer the question concerning what an over-forced bill is?
I don't think anybody knows. If you want to just hold that and get an answer for the next...
I make a motion that we...
I think it's a typo, right?
Agreed.
Nobody's ever heard the technical term, so...
Make a motion to table this until we can have further clarification.
Okay. Item number four will be tabled to our next meeting. Standing, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $6,549.87, as submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. And with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. I'm not gonna read through all of them, I'll just do the numbers, we just did them, there are only three or four of them. So item number one is receiving place on file, item number two is on consent to approve, item number three, receiving place on file, item four is on, is held over to the next meeting, item number five, receiving place on file, item six is receiving place on file, and item number seven is on consent to approve. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve it as read and a no vote to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the Chair would recognize Alderman D. Giovancarlo as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $6,549.87, as submitted by Revenue Collection Manager, Frank A. Caruso.
Motion to approve.
Motion having been made by Alderman Kodo, seconded by Alderman Kula, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the refund is approved. With that, there's no other business before the Board, is there anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and we're adjourned.
Have a great week.